Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
All right, let's try this again, ladies and gentlemen. It's about 6:14 PM on Wednesday, November 3rd. We are in the Lower Theater. The Zoom link on the agenda. There will be an adjustment to the agenda for a time-sensitive item. So, just so you know, when we get to that, our end, there'll be item number one. It is for road certification and bridge standards certification. We need that to apply, qualify for FEMA funding in the recent flooding and heavy rain. So that'll be on the agenda. Got to get a two late for us to put on and the time to get on the agenda. So that being said, I will call the meeting to order. And we do not have the minutes of October 19th available for it to approve tonight. So let's hit that. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters. That will require ratification at a future meeting. As I explained earlier, there's a certification of compliance, the town road and bridge standards and network inventory. Mr. Pickup can give us a little more detail if he so chooses.
Sure. So this is an update. The last time the board actually passed the standards was back in 2019. So these are just adopted New York State standards. It mostly deals with road maintenance and other road-related items. But then they asked for certifications. The last time that you did your certification of the standards was 2015. So basically, all we're asking you to do is you have a copy of the bridge standards, which you had adopted previously. All we need to do is just with this certification, basically say that we are meeting the New York State standards, which we are. We work with U-Trans and we work with all of the other agencies. So we follow all of the guidelines for road maintenance, reconstruction, and repair. And that's basically what FEMA wants us to certify so that when we apply for our federal reimbursements, that's the standard and it gives us a higher reimbursement rate. So it'll basically help us by about a 5% or 7.5% change in reimbursement.
Okay. That being said, that will be item number one on the agenda. We'll get to it. Next item will be public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person. Susan?
Thank you. Thank you. I live, my name is Susan Brace and I live on Eldridge Road in Rockingham, Lower Bartonsville. And I'm just here to raise up the continuing issue problem that we're having in the watershed here. I know that Chuck is aware of this, but I'm not sure if the whole select board has heard about it, but the DeRozers property, out-of-state landowners on Petty Road, late summer, made a decision to excavate or to have Dan Peliquin, their contractor, excavate a sloped parcel. I don't know the degree of slope, but I've been up there and it's definitely a hillside. If you know Petty Road, it's pretty steep. And they're digging a large pond. I haven't been up in a few weeks because they've posted every tree in the vicinity to keep people from checking out the work. But we were hearing excavators for about a month and it didn't rain much at all in September. And then in the first rain in October, there was this massive erosion of mud and silt downstream into the ponds at Reed Duncan's land and Paul Hendrickson's, the old mill pond. And then in continuing downstream into the brook that runs within my property and adjacent to the Langston's property. And that, the issue, well, they never sought out a permit for this work from the Agency of Natural Resources. And then when we contacted or Paul contacted A&amp;R, we did get notified that Tim McNamara of the A&amp;R was investigating. I guess he's with the Stormwater Division. There's an investigation going on. And then we got a notice that the permit had been applied for and we could try to request a public hearing. The question is, at this point, to what end? The construction continued for about another month. And there's further silting and pollution every time it rains. And we've had at least three good-sized rain events, had two inches, nothing huge. And I'm concerned that with, there's more frequent heavy rain events predicted to be occurring in the future because of climate change. So this erosion is going to continue and worsen. Also that there's a pond being built on a hillside above our houses. And the worst case, if the dam were to fail, I don't know how much water they're planning to dam up there, but everybody downstream would be flooded. And the fact that the permit was only applied for after the erosion event was reported, after the damage started, we're just really frustrated. So I'm putting it out there on behalf of all of our neighbors in this watershed, which then flows into the Williams River. By then, it's kind of cleared out, but it's really, it's a mess. And we feel like the state hasn't really followed through. And we just want the town to be aware because it could affect the culvert that connects Eldridge Road. I live on the end of Eldridge Road. If that culvert were to go out between the ponds, we'd have no way out of here or fire trucks would have no way in. So that's just my, I want to just get it on the record.
I believe, Sue, that all the board has been advised with all the emails going about and forth between SWAM and Paul Henderson, et cetera. But it's A&amp;R's headache, I guess, or I guess.
Well, it's our headache.
Put the wood to the fire and keep the heat on because that's the only way you'll probably get any response.
Yeah, I just think the town might, I'll think about my written response too, but if the town were to back us up, that we need, we need some relief from this problem. So thank you for allowing me to speak. And I am speaking, I think, on behalf of the other butters.
I have been up there to talk to Paul.
Yes.
Situation, so.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Pickup has something to say.
Let Sue jump in then.
Thanks, Susan. But it is a fire pond. That's our other consideration. And I know that the Fire Department, Rockingham Fire Department, was going to try to test to see whether or not they can even get water out of that pond now or if it's just too silted up that it's not usable. So that's another big concern for the rest of the neighbors.
Yes.
Longer have, we may no longer have access to water in case. I don't think they were able to do it last week. Maybe they'll try to do it tonight, but.
Right. I mean, I think the challenge is obviously, A&amp;R is the lead agency. They have filed the notice of violation, so there's a whole host of solutions now available through that process. We can't really supersede that on our level. So it's frustrating because obviously, we're a little more responsive sometimes than the state agencies might be, but they have been on site. They have gotten some cooperation from the contractor. And I think there will be some opportunities for the neighbors to get some relief as this goes forward. So at this point, I think we really have to, while I recognize the frustration and I think we all feel that we would like to do more, I think we can't really supersede their activities. And I'm hopeful that as people have continued to document damages that they've witnessed, other concerns that they have, that the state will make sure that remediation is on whatever outcome occurs based on this process, that we make sure that remediation satisfies all the neighbors' concerns.
Yeah, for our safety. Okay. Thank you.
We are with you in the same, in the same boat, but I just, you know.
I understand.
It's frustrating because we would like to do more, more quickly. I guess maybe that's the only answer we have at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't really looking for an answer. I just want to put it on the record that it's ongoing. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, mandatory report.
Nothing for tonight. I do have just a new finance director that I thought we'd introduce and we'll go through later and talk about some stuff with financials. But Alyssa is here this evening. She just started Monday, so I'm still leaving her locked into rooms and different things in the building.
Don't have the train.
Yeah, so she, it's a me problem, not a her problem. But just from the staff standpoint, it's nice to have her here. Cynthia's going to be helping us with the transition because we're really jumping and we've got a draft sort of budget mix, but that's a very preliminary draft just from the standpoint of November is incredibly busy with auditors and other activities. But we are happy that she's here. And like I said, we won't have more as we get into our financials later on in the meeting.
Okay. We're on the agenda. As I mentioned, number one will be a certification for the road town bridge. I'll take a motion to approve that form.
I'll make the motion to approve the certification of compliance for town, town road and bridge standards and network inventory.
We're second. I'm being seconded to approve the certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory. For the comment, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries coming around for signatures. Okay. Still holding here for number two, approve errors, omissions and additions, grand list 2021. There's a argument in your packet?
Basically, Alyssa received notification from Montpelier that we had three veteran exemptions that were not supposed to be there.
I was going to ask, because I know Ed Camps of that, I don't understand why he's not getting that.
That will be something that will be worked out between, and looking at it, the way it appears is that he owns two pieces of property and there were exemptions on both pieces of property if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, good one. I don't know the other two of them, so I just. Anybody have any questions on the errors, omissions? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the errors, omissions and additions for the grand list.
We've approved errors, omissions and additions for the grand list of 202025.
We're second.
Second.
Motion being seconded to approve the errors, omissions and additions to the schedule. Although, any for the comment, questions? Hearing none, seeing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries coming around for signatures. Okay. Update on historic preservation items, 66 Atkins Street.
So thanks, Peter. There has been some activity on site. We've had a contractor that has been removing some of the slate from the roof. We've been attempting to get a price for you just for consideration of removal of the guano that's in the tower. I've been in contact with a couple of companies. Nobody has responded back. I'll try again before our next meeting, but at this point, we're running out of time and options in terms of trying to get that piece of the property at least costed out so that the board has an opportunity to decide whether or not that would be something that they would want to go forward with. Historic preservation, and I think Walter's on, online, if you'd like to just update the board in terms of the documentation, because I know that he's been in the building and I was told that he's finished with pictures and other documentation, but maybe he could give us an update.
Yes. Thank you very much. I can say that most of the internal picture taking has been finished and also compounds some information about internal measurements and stuff. All of this has to do with creating some information that we can then put together as a way to visualize the building in a Section 106 style mitigation effort. Once the building is gone, we'll have a record of what was there for historic preservation purposes down the road. I will be completing outside pictures. I wanted to get the inside pictures done and out of the way first because of the roofwork and some of the other challenges of working inside the building. So that's all the pace and feeling fairly confident that that'll be done here within the next week or so. That is the outside picture taking.
Questions, Scott or Walter? So we being paid for that slate or is it a free gift, are you taking it down or what? Do we know where we are?
That was a side deal. I'm not sure what's going to be the ultimate resolution on the slate. So that was something that the contractor was coordinating. Ochkins was coordinating.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Do we know if they're going to do the south side and north side? Pretty much complete.
I don't think he's coming back. I think that was.
You know, they're going to check the north side off because I know they probably have to close that school street extension off.
Yeah, he was not planning on closing down the school. We're interfering with school activities, so that might be all he can get for now.
So what's the process for the rest of the items that you're trying to preserve, like the window and the?
After some very thorough and careful research about its value, it's got to the point where I think the decision had to be made that it was not prudent to move forward with paying with taxpayer dollars, the removal of that window. It is not as valuable as we thought it might have been. And again, the research that we concluded indicated that it was not worth the cost of removal. We would not have a return on the investment. And I understand right now that there is a group that is working to remove the window and put it into storage for local town use. And I believe that that, that particular initiative that's underway has to do with volunteer, with volunteers and probably with some private philanthropy to remove the window. The other stuff.
Go ahead, Walter.
Yep. The steeple is on hold, I gather, pending the guano remediation. It's my understanding that the steeple jack that we had been in contact with will, he cannot legally remove it unless he has an abate, a guano abatement certification document in his hands. So that's on hold pending the guano abatement issue.
What was the, was the abatement of the materials there? Guano, does that go the same for the window? I mean, if they can't remove one, they shouldn't be able to remove the other one.
I don't believe that there's any guano on the stained glass window. It's dirty, but the guano issue is up in the steeple.
Okay, well, it's not the way, it was confusing reading the article in the paper that just mentioned those quotes might have been.
It's a sanitation or something. Like a special. It's a special process and it's fitted toxic stuff.
I know, I know you mentioned you're trying to get checks on that.
Nobody's coming forward to give us a real.
So I guess if we don't hear anything by next week, we probably, or next meeting, we should probably maybe rescind our previous motions, allocated funds for removal.
I think you can just let it expire and not expend the funds. I don't necessarily have to do a decision. I think at this point, we can just let it rest.
Just technically, I'm trying to find.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
What's the foundation like of that building? Is it cut granite or brick?
There's some that's stone. I've been in the basement, but it was often.
Great person.
It was kind of stupid. Actually, it was in October last year when they were boarding.
I didn't want to get you to admit that, but.
When they were boarding it up, so yeah, that was probably the brightest roof, but.
There's stone.
Yeah, I survived that day. But there is some stone, but I don't remember all of it because we didn't go and do the whole basement, so.
If I may.
Yeah.
If I may shed some light on that, it is primarily a rubble foundation. That is a stone foundation and it graded, it's capped off with brick in order to level it out to build the building itself. Very typical kind of early 19th, actually, the construction technique that continued up through the end of the 19th century. So it is very typical. It does not look like it's cracking and falling apart, but like the rest of the building, it is very tired.
Good description. So there's no, there's no value in any of that material?
I, I cannot speak to that. I've not looked into that. It's actually a good question about the stone. I don't know what, what is in the demolition contract and what the, you know, what the contract says about the foundation.
Look, Ray, Walter, I think was what we had written into the spec, if I remember correctly, the restoration.
So when the sacks were parked, it was made, it was some stone I went over and it turned out to make perfect benches and it had been there, but they were going to be cast concrete that would be beautiful and stone, so hanging on that stuff might not be a bad idea.
Any other for the comments, questions? Seeing none, move on to item number four, which is the appointment to the Regional Emergency Management Committee. And I did reply to that woman that had been pestering me for about three weeks of who we appointed? So I went back to check the minutes. We saw that we did Sean McGinnis was appointed as Emergency Management Director and then didn't put Dave Vemus down because he was the other, has to be a policeman or somebody in law enforcement or to that degree. So I threw his name on there and just to get along, so I do need to appoint someone to like, so.
So Peter's right. So the state changed the way that they are coordinating regionally. So there used to be a sort of a round table type of approach and each local emergency management director would bring these groups of people into the round table for follow-up and feedback and just general emergency oversight. Well, the state wanted to formalize that, which they had done. And so now they have these local emergency, the regional emergency management committees, which are a much more formalized structure, and they've asked us to go back. And even though we have pointed people through our local emergency management plan with the state, they wanted the select board to adopt this as a follow-up to that. So that's why it's on your agenda for this evening.
Do you know if Sean's been approached to serve on this?
I talked to him about it. He's aware.
Dave also, or?
Yes.
Okay. So that being said, take a motion to appoint Sean McGinnis and Dave Vemus as the appointment to the Regional Emergency Management Committee. There.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion's made and seconded to appoint Dave Vemus and Sean McGinnis as the Regional Emergency Management Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving right along. In your packet, food scrap program survey and discussion. I took this upon myself to get on there for about a month's time and see the results of my labors there. We had 264 code users all split up by area. That's pretty simple to them. And I split it up by amount of material that was deposited. A milk jug or something similar was considered a gallon, anything less than that was a half gallon. So you can see the amount of material that was dropped per container. Total pounds we have is 5,628 pounds of material for the month. I don't know how the bill for the material that's billed, just it was a lump sum, I guess. They don't bill by the pound or anything.
They bill us by gallons because they take it by container.
Roughly amount, well, as they say, a gallon is eight pounds, so.
Yeah, it's a pretty close proportion.
So, yeah. So if you take the gallons and then it would probably change from 11 cents a gallon or a pound to a gallon. So we also asked them if they had garbage disposals in their house. We had 26 people that did. Half of them said they don't use them because they plug up. The other ones, and those that had subject systems said the same thing. We also asked them if they composted at home and, behold, the same number said yes. But they said, some of them said the same thing because the animal problems, bears and things getting in, they've temporarily stopped. Whether they go back or not is another story. So that would be food for ammunition to decide whether we want to charge for food scraps or not. Right now, I've been told Brattleboro, Springfield and Weddlesfield are now charging. I don't know what their rates are, but they are charging for food scraps.
You'll need to section that. If you make it more expensive or difficult, create more for food scraps and end up with charges.
It's already got beat. You can tell when that, when the stuff, when they throw it in a bag and it stinks, that's not trash, it's garbage.
That would exacerbate it.
In fact, I had one person admit that that was garbage they were throwing in there. So that's what probably going to end up, but it does cost us about $700 a year. You figure $600 a month times 12, that's just $700 bucks. So we don't recruit that.
Might we just consider it as part of our municipal duty to, the state mandated this.
State mandated.
Give us any money to do it.
We did approach them. I guess Larry asked them about that and their answer was, oh, you're doing it, so I guess it's on you, so.
Isn't there a fine if you don't do it? So what are the fines?
I think you can be if they come and inspect you and they find that, right, you have recyclables in the waste stream or you have other things like this in the road stream, they can, they can find us. They've been out and written warnings before, they have not found us yet.
For the users though, do they expect everyone to find?
The state comes to inspect, so they just come and they'll pull randomly and then they'll, they'll find us as the operator, not the individual as the operator.
So we try to enforce it. What are our options?
A lot of aggravated people.
I have that now.
That's all, that's all is sort of there. So I guess more aggravated people. And then we don't have any specific local fines written into our local laws, so we'd probably have to create something along those lines to be able to, you know, write somebody with some sort of a fine if we were going that direction.
Yeah. I mean, the other issue with charging is then you have staffing to deal with the charging. We end up paying someone more staff that than we're paying in these fees. I mean, the other problem. I mean, we're already over on our staffing for the, for the recycling center. This would, I would imagine, just increase that a lot.
It would make it more difficult. Right. I mean, we tried to add extra people just for, you know, first of all, the efficiency of trying to get people through, but also trying to monitor as long as we can so that people are paying what they're supposed to pay and also disposing of the materials where they're supposed to go. So not everybody's compliant, so as Peter can tell you, there's a lot of garbage.
Yeah, and short of cutting open a bag and checking it, I know they, rumor has it, they do that in Springfield, they cut the bag open, they're looking at stuff. That's why we're getting a lot of, of salon residents coming down our place because number one is cheaper. In fact, I was a guy from Waltham comes up with a little bag of his material like a week or sometimes three times, three days a week to get rid of his food scraps because they have want to take a brown one. To me, ridiculous, but anyway, that's his joy.
Do we deal with it the same way we deal with these different mega cameras, have a, have a, okay?
Or you would have to pay.
Well, you pay as permit, David. But then after that, you can do whatever you want.
Guy has an access permit, so he doesn't pay for that.
Oh, I see. Well, how does it work? You know, a lot of people don't take their garbage, they, they, they carry it and these other ones pick it up. How, well, what happens with that stuff? How does that work? Because they're not, they're not separating.
They could potentially be fined as well.
Yes, they're supposed to comply. There is a compliance for that. Those fines, I think, are more significant because obviously, it's part of the violence.
So where do they take the stuff after they pick it up?
Well, they have transfer stations. So my guess is they'll have the same type of thing we have, they'll have an inspection department or check. Depending on what they find, they could end up finding those companies as well.
As a folks, I see how their trash picked up by a, a hauler. It's split off.
No, not at all.
Probably don't.
Not usually. I have not seen it normally.
Because everybody on my street has their trash picked up and it, it doesn't. Because everybody on my street has their trash picked up and it's, it's a separate thing.
I know last week we had one gentleman, went with six-five gallon buckets.
A restaurant?
One person, no, no, I can see.
I mean, what you're really paying for here.
I was too busy chasing stickers.
You're paying for the hauling cost because really, the cost for us is the cost of the person, of the service that comes to haul it away. And they take it to a compost site, which then they use it for their process of whatever site they take it to and then it comes back as compost at some point.
Kind of a mess, too, though.
They actually make money at both ends, they charge us, they're making money off of us and they turn around compost, they sell compost, so they're making money on that end.
So there aren't anaerobic digesters that you can buy and that can do that material on-site, the problem with that is, is those require a little bit of effort to, to turn out the material and at this point, we're not really staffed appropriately to be able to do it, the team, so. You can certainly look into it again, but those are relatively expensive machines, too.
Would there be, would there be money? Could that, may it be my answer, is that?
Well, anytime you can make dirt, somebody will pay you depending upon the quality of your dirt, so there's always, you people buy rocks and dirt, so yeah, the answer is yes.
That's the thing, things are dirt cheaper, dirt ain't one of them.
Yeah.
Right.
But yeah, so yeah.
They could also be contaminated if people couldn't.
Soup.
You know, stuff in there with stickers still on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I hesitate to, you know, charge people for, you know, the half gallon, gallon, two gallon, but when you're getting into deciding you're dumping a lot, I think maybe you say under such and such is free, if you reach a certain amount, then you get charged.
You'd still need a staff person now, why not?
You would, well.
Yeah, it creates a.
I mean, you would probably see, I mean, if there's someone standing at the garbage, garbage bag receptacle looking, you can see over the other one, if someone showing up in a pickup truck full of scraps, you would notice it.
Oh, yeah, it's easy, I mean, it's not difficult to detect them when they, that's, they go right over there and they stop, so I know they're going in there for for their stuff, so.
But I, I mean, for someone, I mean, a lot of people like I know who do their own home composting like me, I take my bones there because I can do that. And so that's like, once a month, I might have a small little bag like this with my bone, but and that would end up in all the garbage if we charge people for that small.
And in fact, we increased rates three substantially recently.
Uh, well, one through Madonna Court, up to two bucks for a small bag, so.
We, we've got, we started running it that way.
Yeah, but you also have to understand there's a forty-five thousand dollar hauling fee that's included in there, so hopefully we're gonna cover that. You look at the salt waste disposal line on your, on your budget design, budget forty-five thousand, we're on target to probably hit that. But that, that hopefully will be covered by, of course, when we weigh material there, there could be a combination of also trash and, you know, C and D disposal, construction disposal and stuff. You don't know that if you're not opening a bag, but anybody that comes in with more than four bags is required to weigh. And so that money has come up, so as we get further towards the, you know, the, the end of the budgets, you know, we want pretty much tell whether we're gonna cover that forty-five thousand dollars.
Staffing remain at the current levels, I know, I've noticed a pretty dramatic increase in the folks there and it's nice to have the, the line moves faster, but are we are we overstaffed, understaffed, or are you just what, right?
Well, don't forget, we had a day, so that was a part of it as well. And, and I think we did this because there was a concern that we were getting such a long backup of people, they were out into the road and it's creating a really dangerous sort of hazardous condition, so. The good news is, I think you look at the facility and the fact that we have the people there, they can ensure people get through the facility quickly and they can assist when needed and then they also keep the place looking pretty nice, so we could certainly cut back staff, but what you see today will not be there six months from now.
And they're sure people pay.
It would be nice if we had volunteers because it does help, we do need two people on the garbage compactor. Besides, and probably not some life, but as Scott just mentioned, there again is a traffic situation. If you get more than four five cars and they start backing up onto the road, we've got to get them through here somehow. And now we, the brush disposal is now over on that side just beyond the uncoordinated compactor for the recyclables, so the only thing we pour over where the, all the brush needs to go is leaves. So we're trying to dispose of it over the day because it's, you know, it'll decay, so we don't have, it's organic matter, so.
So, so are there limits, are there the south side and pushback, is there something?
Yeah, that's, that's where it's going in there. But as I say, there's those three dumpsters up there for construction. People just sometimes just drive up there and throw stuff in there without paying or, and so they're trying to watch the rubbish stuff and you know, all of a sudden you see the car, did he pay? You know, you don't know, so you're gonna need someone controlling that.
The next real challenge we have to address and we'll address it through the buzzer discussions is the little shed building that currently houses the tires and the food scrap recycling, if you notice, it's got a pretty severe lean, it's not in great shape. And it's probably past time for it to be replaced. And even if we keep it simple, we're just doing some sort of concrete with an open air roof above to keep materials off, it's, it's still gonna be some investment there. You know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, so to sort of make sure that that's safe, so.
Thank you.
Just the other thing was that I know that one of the committees that came out of the process that we had downline process was looking at composting and very good composting in town, so it might be good to reach out to them, I mean, some of these people who are afraid of composting at home might, if they knew they had the right compost facility, you know, or barrel or whatever at home, they might get more people doing that at home, if, if that committee could work in the town and have some education. I mean, they were trying, they were doing that and then COVID hit and I think a lot of things are still not happening, but they were really active on that earlier on.
Okay, we exhausted the discussion on this. Here's the B, let's move on to the grant resolution of support. I have one here, is this for the first item, was it school action street?
So, yeah, it's gonna give you an update, so Gary and I, we're gonna hold on the school and Acton Street grant until the next meeting. We still have a few items that we needed to get. That's gonna be a planning grant, it's not ready for you for this evening, we still have, I believe that one must do the end of November. So we still have a little bit of time, so, so we'll just hold that, I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting. The residential housing bylaw modernization grant, I think Gary had put together a memo for that and I think we had discussed it in previous meetings, so he just was summarizing what we had already discussed. We are proposing that our, our portion of this is relatively small compared to the amount of, of the grant. And there is also, I think, some paperwork that I gave to Peter earlier as well, that we'll have to then submit with this, with this proposal as well. Gary, do you want to add anything else for the bylaws modernization?
No, no, we discussed it at the last meeting, just here to answer questions if there's any specifics.
I have a question.
Yeah, all right.
So it looks like we've been incentivized this long, Gary, for a long time, of our meeting. And the process would be that consultant comes and works with us, then the proposal would come to the select board for approval, is that?
So the, the planning commission, they, they work on the.
Hey Gary, that's not working, you have to come, just to the table.
Because we're picking up from here, so.
Yeah, sorry about that.
The sound is not hearing.
Yeah, they're not doing anything.
The, the planning commission rewrites the town plan and brings that to the select board for acceptance and then to the Windham Regional Commission for their adoption and then of the zoning bylaws fit those land use regulations, the housing chapter, so they've been working through that. The, the zoning bylaw changes come from the planning commission and this, this grant, the it's a, it's a one-time and the first time for this, this grant and there's a housing shortage all through Vermont. So the state put a bunch of money into the zoning bylaw modernization grant program to help communities make it easier to increase quality housing. And so sometimes, I think what's, what's in this memo, Chuck wrote a little piece at the beginning of this, we make the zoning bylaw adjustments to achieve the things that we want and because we're not experts with the language, there's sometimes unintended consequences. So as the planning commission works through these changes and they're also coordinating with the group that came out of our technical assistance program with incremental development alliance. So as, as they work through that and make recommended changes to achieve a vision, this grant will pay for the, the legal consultants that write bylaw language so that we get the results that we're intending and don't end up with unintentional consequences. And so that's basically what'll, what'll happen here, is to make adjustments so that it, we achieve the vision we want in terms of you know, maybe not getting a mobile house, a mobile home in a historic district where it doesn't really fit because we there's something missing in the way the, the bylaw was written. And so that it's also easier to, to build, to build more housing in places where we want it, right? Our, our downtowns where we want the density and we want more housing and the, the built environment that, that fits from the old days is, does have that density. So that's basically, this, this will get us the consultants towards the end of that process so that we get the language right, that we bring to you for adoption.
Okay, will there be hearings for those affected by these, and what goes on?
Yes, so the, the zoning bylaws do go through a set of public hearings in the same way that the town plan does as well. So all of these will have public hearings and will come to the select board for adoption.
I think the, the steps are, the town plan gets written and it's sort of aspirational. And then once, and then there's public so hearings or whatever on that, select board has to okay it and then boom, the town plan. Then, once you've got that, you go back to your zoning and say, does this zoning reflect the aspirations and goals and so forth in the town plan? And a lot of cases, it won't because it's ancient. So then you start working on changing the zoning. And every time you change the zoning, yeah, there's public hearings, has to go through the select board, that's like months, months away, though. And this is just to help when they get to the point of writing the zoning. Because regulations have like this obnoxious language, you know, and it's, it's to help you have some experts, you know, translate your aspirations into this obnoxious language in a way that you don't get caught with a loophole you didn't even anticipate.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful.
Is that right, Gary?
So, so this probably, this venue would not be proper to bring up several portions, they're probably better off with those hearings.
Yes, yeah, I think so.
I mean, I got a bunch of notes here, but I'm, I'm not gonna pull over the board with that. Okay, anyone else have any comments?
No, and is there a town match on this grant?
Yes, so the, the town of Rockingham match is a thousand dollars, the village of Saxon's River match is five hundred dollars. The Main Street Arts match is five hundred dollars and the Saxon's River Historical Society is two hundred dollars. So the total matching funds that we're putting in the application is twenty-two hundred dollars and it's a bit of an overmatch and it's spread out broad based because both of those things make us more competitive and it isn't competitive.
Okay, so the resolution I have in front of me, do we need to read this thing? Or can we just adopt it?
As presented.
I mean, it just basically says that we're not gonna agree to it at all.
I think I would just add the amount, Peter, the appropriation, and then I think for us, we can adopt this.
That's the eighty-three hundred, should you know.
I would adopt just the portion that you were gonna propose.
To, to read it out, you might want to read the part that says, like, where we commit to the local matter.
All right, I mean, let me turn it and then go.
Yeah, that part's important, right.
All right, this is a municipal resolution from municipal planning grant. Whereas the municipality of Rockham is applying for funding as provided for in the FY twenty-two budget act may receive an award of funds under said provisions and whereas the Department of Housing and Communities Development may offer a grant agreement for this municipality said funding and whereas the municipality maintains its efforts to provide local funds for municipal and regional planning purposes for that the municipality has voted at an annual expresso meeting to provide local funds for municipal and regional planning purposes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the legislative body of this municipality enters into an agreement and requirements and applications to this grant program including a commitment to match funds. That the planning commission, municipal planning commission recommends a plank for said grant that Scott Pickup Municipal Manager, who is the chief executive officer defined by ten BSA six-eight-three, front two's eight, or is a select board member, town manager, et cetera, et cetera, and to execute agreement and other documents as may be necessary, secure these funds. He has a, a place to sign that Scott Pickup is the alternate, I guess we're gonna go on most Gary Fox, is that correct?
Uh, no, it has to be either a, or you could be an alternate, it has to be a select board member or a municipal manager.
That Peter Golick's chairboard, uh, chair of select board was the, and either the exec, chief executive officer is defined by ten BSA, blah, blah, blah. As town manager, city manager, town administrator, thereby designated to serve as the municipal authorizing agent for the grant electronic application and reporting and system years and to execute the grant agreement and other documents as may be necessary to secure these funds, that Gary Fox, I'm the director of two by, designated as a grant administrator, the person with the overall administrative responsibility for the municipal branding grant program activities related to the application and any subsequent grant agreement provisions passed this third day of November twenty-twenty-one. So I'll take a motion to not. You got, got the issue first. Okay, votes are made and selected to adopt the municipal resolution from municipal planning grant. Although, any further discussion, questions? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, nay? Motion passes, coming around the signatures. Discussion of twenty-twenty-two budget calendar and general budget guidance.
Peter had asked if we could put this on, at our next meeting, we've committed to giving you a capital and debt update and, and sort of the projects, just to look at things that we know of and things that are out there, you can see where your debt falls off and where you might have opportunities to to look at future projects, we had discussed previously that the Depot Street Bridge has been pushed back a little bit, we are still working with the state, we had originally thought that we might be spending money on that in potentially twenty-three or twenty-four. It does now, based on my most recent correspondence with VHB, that that's pushed out till twenty-five for construction. So from a debt and the payment prep book, that'll be a twenty-six, possibly even twenty-seven payment for that bridge. The Bridge Street Bridge is still on the tip, but it has not given any indication of an exact schedule. It could potentially start with engineering and right away as early as twenty-four, twenty-five and then move that bridge as well into construction sometime in twenty-six or twenty-seven. Those dates are still very loose with the Vtrans folks and I don't have as much confidence that that schedule will stay going forward. And then wireless, as we've talked about, is in that ten-year, twenty-three through thirty-two transportation improvement plan from New Hampshire, it does not have the records of funding, we'll be sending in our comments by the eighth, but that bridge, if you looked at that, that schedule, they are actually gonna start engineering and, at least by that schedule in twenty-three with construction potentially on that. With construction potentially on that beginning in twenty-seven, I believe, on that one, the way it was set up. And again, that's not funded, so those are all just milestones. But the point of all that being is we pull all the projects that we know together, what's your current debt schedules are, what other things that we have on the near-term horizon with equipment. There are some items that we have to go through that are fairly large expenditures that we get into. Fire equipment replacements, that'll be a point of conversation. And I am not gonna have any ARPA recommendations or process recommendation. I figured the board would wanna have some semblance of other communities that put together committees. I thought tonight we could at least start that conversation as to what your particular interest might be so that we could put together a process to involve the public. I think the ARPA money, again, doesn't have to be spent, I believe. The most recent thing that I saw is it doesn't have to go out the door until sometime in twenty-twenty-four. So you have time to take your time and engage the public and make some long-term decisions on some of that money. So that was not part of this sort of budget calendar. With all that being said, and we do have, I said a new finance director on board, so we do appreciate that we'll have, you know, a new set of hands and a new set of eyes, which is beneficial. Melissa's been through this, she was a partner, so she has some understanding of this for budgeting and the process and types of things that we go through as we go through the budget. With all that as sort of a background, I did put together just a draft calendar with just some dates as milestones. These are not any kind of, these are just for discussion purposes. I thought I'd throw these out with some just broad staff and operational areas for us to review. And if there was other particular items or other issues you wanted to address, tonight would be the night. I could at least get that started and then come back to you in the meeting of the sixteenth with a full calendar. So it's always difficult on the holidays and that time of the year to try to make sure everybody can block off time accordingly, so.
Are you looking for suggestions tonight?
I'm looking for any information, any input, anything you want in guidance.
Seeing as World Series of Run, I'll throw a wild pitch out here on the table.
Love wild pitches.
I would like to propose that we look for a tax reduction on the tax rate of five cents. Would we equate to a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget reduction? Just throwing it out there for ideas. Some bonds are coming due that we won't be paying going forward. I think with fund balance, we could probably make up some of that depending on what other expenses we're gonna be envisioning going in budget. I don't know that we need to go through a line-by-line process like we've done in the past. I think that's cumbersome. I think if we give you guys some marching orders, you can go back with some proposals and if we see something we don't like, I guess we'll send you back, do something else. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but Frank, go ahead.
The, I have to note a worthy goal for the ARPA money was crucial in achieving that. My suggestion is that we get the ARPA process going a little sooner so we can apply money to that.
Well, ARPA can't be used to offset your operating budget in that way. It can be used to supplement projects. And that's part of the conversation we get into capital. We should talk about that. There are uses that are, at least at this point, I think, eligible potentially for ARPA through that type of expenditure. The other types of things that they've laid out would probably not, you know, be achievable, at least not if you're trying to do a reduction in taxes.
So for example, new equipment for the fire department, that wouldn't be ARPA?
I would say that would be very difficult unless you did something very specifically with like the breathing apparatus or something that could protect them from viruses or that type of thing. But an actual truck or those types of things are outside of the current scope.
So what kind of things have they been doing?
They've been pushing broadband improvements, infrastructure improvements that relate to climate change and specialty pay for people like first responders and other people who are potentially infected. And also potentially economic development that would be, so communities that have, and everybody's had an impact from COVID-related issues with the economy, thinks that you could do investments that would help your local economy rebound. Those are the broadband categories so far that have been in the guidance.
So, I mean, I'm not advocating for this, I'm just giving you an example. Could you take like twenty-five thousand dollars and say, we're going to make a website devoted to tourism? Would that be like a project that would be?
I think we would, we could, there are some people at the state that are BCL, that are supposed to be more directly involved. I think that's the kind of thing I would ask them directly. Say, this seems to be an economic development initiative, looking at the guidelines, you know, we think that this might qualify so that we don't run into a problem.
Okay, so that's just like a maybe.
Well, I think we would have some other eyes look at it and say, yeah, this looks reasonable, or, you know, no, this isn't gonna make it, so.
I'm trying to think of what kind of things, what, does anybody think of another kind of thing?
Upcreating culverts to better handle storms because of global warming.
That's a climate change impact and I think that's potentially eligible. And don't forget, we're also gonna be doing some of that as part of the hazard mitigation process of our current July storm. So there are some things like that, that, there are others we could definitely do.
Like the trees?
That would be considering. If it does have a climate impact, it's a little bit of a stretch rather than that would probably qualify.
Sewer and water.
Those are a hundred percent on sewer and water.
And trash disposal?
You're trying to get food scraps, 'cause I know what you're after.
The digester might, that one might.
Yeah.
As opposed to, yeah, I hear what you're saying. The digester could potentially qualify.
That's a good idea.
When their time sues, like, what's soon to come?
No, I was just gonna say, you know, the, I would hate to like the five cents. I think it would be great if we could do that. But I also worry, I mean, we are going to have a drop in our debt, but we don't wanna get to the point where we drop the tax rate and then we have all these capital projects that have to get funded and then up goes the tax rate again. We wanna keep that, we wanna find that steady balance. And I think we can't do that until we look at our long-term capital needs.
That comes up on some stage.
Exactly, so, I mean, I think it's.
I'm just throwing out on the table just for food protection.
Because we also have, you know, various roads that need to be repaired. Maybe some roads have to be rebuilt that have been put down the line. And we have, even though it's further down the line, I think it's twenty-thirty-five, thirty hydroelectrically connected road.
The MGRP standards, yes. We have to have a certain percentage of our roads meeting that by twenty-thirty-five.
Right, but we've gotta start that. It sounds like a long way away, but it really isn't when you're talking about that.
It doesn't take long to get, yeah.
So we have to really, as I said, look at that long-term thing before we can, you know, if people go home, they go, great, we're gonna drop the tax rate by five cents. We don't know. We hope so.
Yeah, in a few two years, everybody's hating this select board setting the.
I hope nobody hates the select board.
Well, they'll be blaming us because of people that follow us that haven't raised the taxes.
Just a suggestive goal, see where we end up. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but. Of course, the other, the other, the other element in the room is the school budget. Every year, we sit there and ask the school budget, that is out of sight. We have ten people, ten students in one classroom. It's totally ridiculous. The state is looking for seventeen people and that's a record and they don't. So why are we running around with ten kids in a classroom? It's, they need to do something. Every year, we sit there afterwards, town goes through their budget. School people get up and they say, the town needs to reduce their budget. They don't say anything about school reducing their budget. They say, this town's gonna reduce their budget. And that would take a few days.
And there are some departments that are gonna be impacted, you know. Our listers, you know, we're incredibly lucky to have three really good, dedicated folks, but they're starting a transition process. We have to talk about how we want to manage that process. I think they're very, they're definitely going to want to talk to the board about that, how that would work. So I think that's one of the areas that we're gonna have to spend some time and talk about. We did meet this summer at the meeting house and we were, I think, all impressed with the work that's being done and the work that's being proposed, but those are, those are potentially grant-funded and I know Walter's working hard and Gary's been working hard on some larger grants that might help us with some substantial improvements, especially in the interior of the structure. But there'll be local matches if we were successful and we'll have to talk about how would we want to move those obligations if we were successful. The library has a new director. I don't know if it's been well-publicized or not, but Selena has retired. So we do have a new director at the library. He just started literally Monday. I don't know if in the past you had them come and get a presentation to you, but I would assume he would like that, so.
They have, they did come through and they presented budget.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the only presentation we get from them, I guess. Other than that, I don't know, Kavini's right now is having a little fun up there with their library in town. They don't know who wants what, I guess. In the minutes, this kind of humorous stuff really reading through it.
Oh, well, and so, and, you know, so all of these things sort of impact, like anything, right, they're all decision points. And that doesn't even get into the opera house or some of the other areas that we could certainly spend some time and energy deciding on, so.
Five o'clock starts.
Okay, I threw that out just as an option. Sometimes it's harder for people, especially if you have a longer meeting and you start at six, but let's face it, by nine o'clock, most everybody's got their head in a microphone. They're just about done with, you know, productive thinking, so. I thought maybe it'd be easier, but we could certainly keep it at six and if we need to add, to add meetings, live meetings.
Can you do five thirty, man?
Sure.
We could certainly make that as an option, too. It does help having that extra half hour, especially if you have presentations, like if I'm inviting the library or somebody to come.
We can't get the camera to work.
Or we, well, yeah, well, that's all, yeah.
Okay, any other further discussion on heads up for the manager and the disciples to figure out where we're gonna go? All right, that being said, last item on thinkers, our agenda is financials. And Alyssa's here.
So Alyssa's here, we did do a budget status report, so we do have an update. I think we ran it Monday, so.
After running through it, it looks like to me that we're pretty much well on target. Some are under expended, so as are some of the revenue and especially the state payments.
Yeah, some of that's timing, Peter, some of that, right. I don't know of anything at the moment that I could point to you and say, yeah, we know we're going to have a problem here. At the moment, I think we're pretty close to budget where we had initially projected when we sat down. The only items that we probably need to talk about that really are an issue that we can talk about through our budget process as well as, we did not budget for the fifty-thousand-dollar payment from NOBIS, which will be coming here relatively shortly. Through the comment period, I spoke to them today on the telephone. So we'll be finalizing the documents. They got all the approvals, the site plan approvals. Environmental went through the comment period. There's been no follow-up or concerns, so we are fully ready for initiating the lease. As soon as we sign the lease, they'll send the payment, so. So that is not reflected anywhere in any of these numbers. Yes?
The penalty system, the upcoming tax sale. Alyssa, Scott has told you about this tax sale coming?
I've heard, yes.
Good, it's gonna be exciting.
Well, just a little bit of information on that, too. The Vermont, what is that, agency of Vermont Housing Assistance? Something, the.
Yeah, there's some, yeah, it's something about COVID stuff or something.
They have a new program and it's not even a hundred percent completed yet, but they are going to have it in December. And part of that program will be, will, if you qualify, meaning you're Vermont homeowner and there's a whole process you have to go through in company. But you potentially could qualify for this Vermont homeowners assistance program to actually pay you back taxes. And we won't have that information. We spoke to them again today. They only have generic, very general information on the website. They won't have it until December first. We're gonna meet, obviously, on the thirtieth with our updated tax list of people who are in delinquency. And at that point, if we have enough information, I think it would be beneficial if the boards decided to go forward with the tax sale to at least give that program enough time and give us enough time to outreach people, kinda like we do with water bills when I send you the pink sheet and say, your water's gonna get turned off in fifteen days unless you pay. I think if we add all that information, I think you would put it on the homeowner or the property owner to say, listen, the state's drawing a lifeline. I can't apply, you have to apply. And if you don't apply, then the next letter you're gonna get from me is gonna be a notification that you're in a tax sale and you've got thirty days or whatever to satisfy that obligation. And then after that, potentially, you know, it will be at a point where I'll take the next action, so.
That could save us a lot of other expense.
Well, it's a lifeline for people, quite frankly. And, you know, again, you can't force people to help themselves, but I think it would make sense for us to give them every opportunity to try. Maybe delays our process by thirty days, still, I think, is probably something.
And did you say that only covers the COVID year? So they have not tried.
They have not given the guidance yet, so I don't know how far back they're gonna go. On the utility portion, they have only covered arrears from COVID, from the state of emergency. So I don't know how far back they'll go on taxes. It's still not been clarified.
Outreach would include, like, letting them know the origins of their interests.
Yeah, I would do that mailing, give them a chance. And then if they don't qualify or they don't choose to participate, then the next mailing, like I said, they would get would be their first notice of tax sale. But it's actually a pretty nice opportunity for people. Quite a few people have benefited from the utility portion. It's made a significant difference for some people. Anything else, anybody?
I just had a question on the bank service charge for the fees. Is that, do we charge people for that?
Yeah, that's a point of concern and in fact, I've already got Alyssa working on a decision. Thank you for that, too, that's been helpful.
I have a lot to say about that.
You're raising your hand in the speaker, you aren't trying to brush that off.
She's only in there two days. I have, I have experience with that particular credit card program and I canceled it in part because we were paying three times the amount in fees than we were collecting from people paying.
Right now, the percentage that we're charging, they're charging us roughly three point three percent on a transaction and I think we're charging one percent. And it's not a good program.
And then there's other, like, monthly, quarterly, other fees on top of that, so you're never.
They're not a great.
It's costing you to allow people to use their credit card.
So one of the things Alyssa and I have talked about is there are other programs through other banks that are available to us and I think they're gonna look into those and possibly make a change so that we can try to capture. There's an inflection point. Obviously, if you're paying a large bill and it's a three percent charge, more than likely they're not gonna use your credit card to pay it. If it's one percent or somewhere in that neighborhood or a fixed fee, you might consider it as opposed to. So that's really something I want to come back to you about and talk about.
And we're not set up, or are we set up for direct, I don't know, ACH or, that sounds set up.
Yeah, I think we do, I think that is for utilities and taxes. So you both tend to do directly and so.
Okay, all right, yeah, I heard people do that.
But the product we're using is pretty difficult. It's a real, it's a good challenge.
The product that I went to is free for municipalities, so it costs the town nothing to use it.
I like that, everyone.
Yeah.
Beware of the word.
And somebody who, who used it for well over a year now and I've had no problems with it whatsoever. The process of, I mean, even reconciling the bank statement with this other product is a nightmare. The way that the, this other one is set up, it's, it's different. It's just so much easier, so everything is a lot better.
Sounds good. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
My third day.
Even though it's been locking her out. Bad person, I apologize.
Is there any other comments or questions on our financials? I noticed there was no highway right now.
No, we'll do that as another. We were still working on a couple of things with their, with theirs. I'll have more information, Peter, especially because it also relates to the theme portion, so I was hoping to have that all in one report to you at the next meeting.
And one point would be, Scott, when you get guidance for the FEDs, which ARPA, which projects are ARPA eligible and not, that would be great for us to hear because we'll have ideas here.
Definitely. Yeah, we're doing a little bit of this on faith. They still only have the interim guidance, so everybody and their brother is just going by the interim treasury guidance, which is 125 pages long, because it's a simple program.
Paperwork production.
Yeah, so.
What's that?
Yeah, but we will, we'll definitely work with, work with that.
Okay, everybody has met Alyssa.
I love her.
All right, if you want to go around the table and if you can, let's decide, everybody can introduce themselves. I've already met herself.
Oh, okay. My name is Bonnie Norwood. What's your last name, Alyssa? Nice to meet you.
Elijah Zimmer.
Oh, you don't know. Susan Hammond.
Rick Callan.
Welcome.
Okay, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
We're very excited to have Alyssa.
Good luck.
Thank you.
She knew well.
Hey, review orders, review and approve orders, bills, and warrants. I have them in front of me, I'll take a motion.
A second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve orders, bills, and warrants. Any comments, suggestions, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. Review agenda items for November 16, 2021 meeting.
So Rick had asked for the cannabis control board update, so there is a report, an interim report coming out, so and some other guidance.
Look at that, up on email, there's this thing about cannabis board and all this stuff that all.
It's a fairly lengthy report.
Stuff that they're proposing and.
Oh, yeah, it's quite a process.
Oh, yeah, it's, well, if you haven't read, I kind of glanced through it today, but I saw it, I was just a whole, like, I'm going to go back and read it again, but.
All right. It's on the agenda for the joint board meeting on the 30th, right?
Yes.
And whether, specific question will be, shall we vote as a town, a direct vote of the citizens versus a decision being made by select boards or trustees or whatever?
Is that right?
Well, I think you're going to, if you want to put it on the town meeting as a specific article, then I think we'll have to go through a couple of communities, have whether or not you want to opt in. And then there is some language from the cannabis control board about potentially the state sharing some more of the revenue, because right now, without the 1% total tax option, you don't get any additional revenue from that. But there is something in that report that I, again, I did the same, like Peter did, I just ran through it briefly. There was some potential about us getting some additional monies due to state portion, but that's only a proposal that probably has to go through a process of my player before we even know if that's going to be.
So what you're saying, Scott, if, if we want to be on the, on the town ballot.
Yes.
We have to make a decision first?
It would be like any other item that you would want to put on for potential activity, but that is one thing you can do, is you can put on a local option for retail cannabis. And then there's a secondary option for larger grow operations as well.
So, so, so the select board would have to be the identity that puts that on one line?
I would assume that you would come back and say, "Yes, we want that on for the, for the town meeting." And then you'd make sure it was warned and it was, the language is appropriate, it's carried forward.
Okay, so we would all have to agree, and the majority of the select board would have to agree. Right, you mean, right?
It would probably come to you in the form of a, just an agenda item like any other item, and I think you would probably go through it, Peter said, if the majority vote, then it would go on as an article.
Do citizens have the option of raising a petition or getting in on it?
My understanding is they do, but it's a little bit more involved for them. They have to give a certain percentage of the amount of voters who voted in the last election, and then they have to present that within a certain timeframe.
Right.
It's a fairly complicated process. It can be done, but it would take some organizing, and then it has to get certified before then is, by the state, before then it goes back to be able to put on for, it's just, it's just a process for that.
Okay, good to know the details of that.
BLCT, I sent, Peter and Scott, they have sampled language for it. A lot of towns.
Considering, I've already done it, yeah.
Twenty-one towns are going to be voting on it this year in their town meetings. And the staff attorney at BLCT sent me a really nice email. Can I share that with the rest of the board by email or data? They don't think they do it, open the email.
I don't, it's not.
Yeah, it's information, only it's not.
It's information, right.
It's a process.
Yeah, I mean, you're not, you're not debating or you're not taking an action, you're just sharing information.
Longer, longer scale, more than people.
I don't see that, it's not a violation.
All right, so BLCT gave, Scott, I can call them, they gave some specific reasons. Susan Snow, the staff attorney, and, well, share that with you guys, it'll help us clarify.
Okay.
Okay, review the agenda items for the joint board meeting. We know cannabis is supposed to be one of the items, I don't know if there's any else on there.
Tax sale, we have a discussion with.
Was Daxx going to be mentioned at that?
Yes, we can update the list and then talk about what this program might entail for the state.
Is the Y going to be discussed? I know it's the day before P-Day, but.
You can always add it.
Because actually, it's not a joint board decision, the town, it's this select board decision.
It could be an update if you saw that they had it on.
Nothing to say about it now. Not on us.
Well, the issue might be, at that point, once we have the building down and we have a lot, what process or what, how would you want to move the next phase of that property forward? That might be a conversation that I want to start at.
Okay, I just, you know.
I know the school definitely wants to talk to you, I know that for a fact.
That's not surprising. They, they talked to us before, but they didn't want to deal with taking the building down. So now that it's going to come down at our expense, guess what?
I'm guessing.
They're all over town. Then they have, I don't know, like, well, I don't know anybody else.
Well, we'll get no tax done.
Exactly, right, so.
Anyway.
Okay, other business, Bonnie. I was with you. Let me ask you a question, why, that I noticed going out to 121 that Westminster had sent a line strike, and all of a sudden it ended, it's downlined and rolled through, and then they picked it up in Saxon River going out to Westminster West.
Has that been part of the roads that they rebuilt after the storm?
Well, no, it's the main highway going out 121.
I don't know, Peter, I'll still.
It was lined in Westminster and it stops the Rockland Town Line, so I think it just changed to Westminster. Now, whether the state screwed up or whoever, but where we tripped seal.
Right.
Starting with the Centennial Bridge in Saxon River that goes out towards Westminster West, that got, I haven't been all the way out to Westminster West, but I know that got the thing. But between Saxon River and Westminster, nothing got done, and nothing's done inside in the center of Saxon River. I don't know if you noticed, there's no line, no center line there.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand why we need that.
I'll check with the OT, maybe it's just they didn't, I don't know.
I mean, it faded, you get a rainy night or a foggy night, it's kind of difficult to see where you're on that road.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? Nope. Hey, don't need to run an exact session, I think of, so I'll take a motion adjourned. I mean, seconded, all those in favor would say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay, pass it.